Good morning, everyone. I'll be calling this work session for February 11th, 2025 to order. If you can please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the state flag. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to the next item, the approval of the work session agenda. I'll second some motion by Commissioner Medina. I second the motion. Do we have any discussion? Seeing on all those in fever?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to the next item is public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual would like to discuss items in more depth, may request to be placed under the agenda, and the request forms are in the county manager's office. Do we have anyone for public speaking? Yes, ma'am, come on up. There's a button there on the side of you.
There you go, thank you. Thanks for having me today. I just wanted to take a minute to share with you what Hila Backcountry Horsemen has been doing to improve the outdoor rec economy in our Grant County.
What is your name? Can you introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Melissa Green with Hila Backcountry Horsemen. I do much better out on the trail than talking in front of a bunch of people, so you'll have to be patient with me. Hila Backcountry Horsemen's mission is to assure continued reasonable use of pack and saddle stock on public lands. Our motto is to keep trails open for all. We do this via trail projects, website with updated trail information and trail head improvements. To this end, Hila Backcountry Horsemen organizes and leads trail projects throughout the Hila National Forest. We engage all types of trail users to keep trails open to all. To help disperse use and keep solitude high, we maintain trails in multiple areas throughout the Hila National Forest. Our main projects are March to May and August to October, ranging from front country day projects to week-long backcountry projects. Many of the trails we improve have not been worked on in decades. Once we reopen them, we do routine maintenance every few years. New Mexico Outdoor Rec and with the Great American Outdoors Act funding has been huge funding source to help us get trails ready for the Hila Centennial last year and into the future. We also created and maintain the Hila Trails Info Website, which provides updated trail information to locals and tourists alike. The information provided includes recommended day hikes and backcountry trips, provides updated weather conditions such as fires, flooding, and a lack of or a lack of water, updated trail conditions, trails cleared maps, and effects of past fires and floods. The Forest Service regularly shares this website with the public. Thanks to New Mexico Outdoor Rec Division Outdoor Marketing Grant, we have a new website that is much prettier. We also just received funding to build additional corrals at Woody's Corral Trailhead to deal with the overflow equine use, and we last built corrals at Upper Guyanese Campground. Thanks to 6,300 volunteer hours, we addressed 60 miles of deferred maintenance and 126 miles of routine maintenance last year. We removed 1,800 logs using crosscuts and chainsaws in addition to lots of brushing, building trail markers, and improving trail tread. Some of the trails we've improved in the past years include a network of trails from Snow Lake and Willow Creek, multiple loop options in Woodland Park and Lily Park, access to McKenna Park and Turkey Creek, many out and back options on the west side of the Hila wilderness that was affected by the 2012 Whitewater Baldi complex fire, and a matrix of trails just north of Silver City. We have more projects planned for this spring, and we are excited to keep trails open. Thank you for your continued support.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public speaking? Okay, move on. Moving on to presentations. First presentation is going to be from Hidalgo Medical Services, the CEO.
Good morning, Commissioners, County Manager Webb, and county staff. Thank you once again for the opportunity to provide a brief update regarding Hidalgo Medical Services. I do apologize, the document that one of the documents that was provided to you in advance had some data points that needed to be updated, so County Manager Webb did hand those up to you, and so we have them in front of you. And instead of me going through each of the sections, I'll just just provide a brief update and continue to provide comprehensive services across the two county area, including 13 clinical sites and our five senior centers in collaboration and partnership with the county, with the senior centers. We two at HMS, like all healthcare systems across the state of New Mexico and the country, are going through a lot of changes. There's a lot of changes that are coming down, of course, that we are all a part of over the last couple of weeks, everything from temporary funding of free temporary freeze of federal funding to very specific direction that we receive on the types of services we can provide. We're working through those in collaboration with the National Association of Community Health Centers with the sole purpose of continuing to serve our communities as per our 330 federal grant. The recruitment efforts continue to be, you know, the traditional sign wave. We get spurts of applicants, and we continually work to recruit for all service lines. We're actually speaking, we have three physicians that we're interviewing. One of them's here today, and then we have a couple more coming in. And, you know, just it's just a constant change in staff and professionals in the healthcare environment. But we continue to work closely with our board of directors to do everything we can to provide the best services possible. And with that, I'll stand for any questions. I know you have the documentation in front of you, and you know, we got that.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Not for Mr. Otero, but I don't think I got the updated. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to next presentation is going to be by Chief Behavioral Health Officer, Medical Director for Tucasa.
Thank you, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, and County Manager, for allowing me to share a quarterly update regarding Tucasa specifically. But in general, behavioral health services at Hidalgo Medical Services. We continue to provide the array of services as before with six different divisions and employ many different types of behavioral health clinicians and employees. Recently, we've hired a new certified peer support who hasn't quite started seeing clients yet, but will start at Tucasa. We also recently received a two federal grants that will help with behavioral health expansion, providing MAT services as well, and hopefully more peer support in the schools, the detention centers hopefully, and senior centers. And so that's hopeful. We've been looking at our numbers, and we don't have to go through the graphs necessarily, but I'll just summarize that compared to six months ago, our numbers had decreased at Tucasa outpatient and also with MAT services. But if you look back at this quarter specifically, we can see they're starting to trend up again, both at with the outpatient services at Tucasa, including groups and individual therapy, and then also with MAT services, our unique number of patients have slowly started to increase over the last two quarters. And I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Adizal. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Commissioner Stevens.
Good morning, Doctor. Thank you for being here. Thank you for the update. I know we've talked in the past about expanding services to offer more like crisis or acute care. And I think starting with a like a one-day hold, right? Can you give us a kind of an estimate of when you think that would be available and open to the community?
So are you talking specifically about the Crisis Triar Center or about mobile crisis response?
Yes.
Okay, so on a couple of different levels, one of those grants does provide us the ability to look at mobile crisis response, which we've advertised some positions for peer support workers to start looking at those services. With regards to the Crisis Triar Center, I believe that's, it's hard for me to give a date. And some of the work that we're doing moving forward with that is, one of the big things is working with the state to become a certified behavioral health clinic, a community behavioral health clinic, and we need that certification in order to receive a better reimbursement rate for the CTC services. And so we've been working for quite some time with the state, and recently have heard with them that it looks like we will be on their, in the program moving forward with likely a January date as far as starting the process of becoming a CCBHC. We had been talking to them possibly moving that up to June or October, so that's still a possibility as well. But that's not actually becoming the CCBHC, but that's beginning the process of that. We have pretty much everything we need in place for that to happen, and the state has been very good in working with us. I don't know if that answered your question.
Yes, it does, thank you. Just, I guess, an add-on, with the mobile crisis units, when will those be up and running?
So that's part of, so one of the federal grants that we received is a two-year grant, and so part of what happens in that first year is the planning and initiation of a program such as that. And so we just received the funds and started advertising for those positions. We received one applicant so far for those positions, but we've had advertised for several. We'll be interviewing that applicant next week.
Thank you.
That also, and I'm sorry, I'll just add this, that also, you know, is going to take the work of not just a couple of people, because it's going to require like an on-call type of model to provide that service 24/7, so we're looking at also hopefully working with other people in the community.
Thank you, doing a great job. Keep doing it for our community, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next presentation, Hila Regional Medical Center. It's Board of Trustees, Director Newport, and the Chair of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Fred Fox.
Thank you. Good morning. So I wanted to start out by just saying that our Board of Trustees, I believe, functions well. We have a diversity of experience and opinion, and this results in both good dialogue and decision-making, and I'm quite pleased with the individuals we have. In terms of recruitment for the hospital, as we all know, providers are difficult to recruit to rural communities, but we have been successful. I wanted to summarize what some of those have been. As I've reported before, we were successful recruiting a pediatrician to join. Recently, we have, in terms of surgical services, we've renewed one contract with an existing physician who is agreed, who is going to stay in the community. One other general surgeon has transitioned from private practice to a hospital employee, and another general surgeon has returned to the community. Additionally, we've recruited a family medicine physician who will start this month in the World Health Clinic, joining Dr. Sargent, Dr. Stanley there. The, we've continued, we will continue efforts to recruit needed specialties and have retained services of recruitment firm and are also establishing relationships with New Mexico Health Resources, a state resource to help with recruitment. And specifically, we'll try to look at both geriatric services, geriatric providers, and possibly urological services as well, and continue to recruit further primary care. Additionally, we continued working with re-establishing the Family Medicine Residency Program. In this, we work in conjunction with Hidalgo Medical Services, but also with U and M and others in the community. We're exploring options for the first-year residents where they may spend that year. Right now, we're negotiating with U and M for that, but also looking at other possible such as a rural track, and also looking at options of funding. Additionally, the board has been working with the hospital to develop improved metrics to assess the performance of the revenue cycle so that we can better understand the performance of revenue generation and try to help maximize revenue that comes into the hospital. That concludes, are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Fox. Excuse me. Only question I have is I know when we were on the Board of Trustees, we had asked if somebody'd look into recruiting a urologist. Do you know if that's ongoing or if that's been put on the wayside there?
I'm sorry, urologist or neurologist?
Yes.
Urologist, okay. Yes, that's on the agenda for, we're going to try to work with this recruiting firm to do that.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Thank you, sir. Moving on to the next presentation, the Grant County Health Council Quarterly Report. Mr. Joseph Hill, Director of Prevention and Community Collaborations.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I've got some visual aids here, just want to make sure they are visible. All right. So, our mission statement is to allow people to bring together, assess, plan, prioritize, and coordinate local efforts to empower the community. Our vision is to form a diverse and passionate group of individuals that unite to strengthen local resources and build new opportunities in Grant County. And so I just want to show you some highlights of how we've been doing that over the past six months. First, I just want to start with what I'm calling collaborative partnership events. These are where we were a primary partner in planning or executing a community event or action. And so we had the Senior Health and Resource Fair in Hila. We did that with HMS, the Youth Prevention Coalition, as well as other departments within the Public Health Institute, and that went very well. We also had International Overdose Awareness Day, where we did a presentation at the Silco Theater, showing a film and also providing access to resources to the various people that attended. Other partnership events that we supported where we just showed up in a supportive capacity was the Community Partnership for Children's Prevention Day, the Members Valley Fall Festival, and the Silver City Health and Resource Fair, and also Red Ribbon Week, which was also a blast. One thing that we're very excited about is we just received a grant from the Department of Health for opioid overdose prevention, already lined up, and we just got this in January, and we already have lined up that all incoming HMS staff will be trained in the lock zone, which is what you use to help someone if they're having an overdose. And so we'll be training them how to administer that for the incoming staff, all the staff. We'll also be working with WNMU Nursing Department to offer that training to nursing students, as well as COBRA schools to offer that to the school staff. The last time we were here and gave a report, we talked about our collaboration with the Local Behavioral Health Collaborative, also known as LC6. Just a really brief idea of what that is. So in 2004, it was written into legislation that there would be a group that would work and collaborate amongst all the agencies. It was originally called the Inter-Agency Health Collaborative around behavioral health. They found that they needed a look on the ground around that, and so they formed a local behavioral health collaboratives. They did this by judicial district. So this being the sixth judicial district, this is with the three sister counties. It had gone dormant for a bit, and so as the Public Health Institute picked this up, we thought through why this didn't work and why this didn't serve the counties the way it should have. And so what we came up with was to make sure that we embedded into bodies that are already doing the work in those communities. So we have a formal agreement with each health council in each county, and so that's been a great development for the Grant County Community Health Council as it not only continues our conversation around what's going on in behavioral health in our county, but it also links us in with what's going on regionally. And so as we've been doing that, we've been doing analysis across the three counties, but also a deeper dive within Grant County. And so I just wanted to make you aware of a few of the things that we're responding to based on that analysis. In substance use for adults, we found that Grant County has one of the highest rates in the state around chronic heavy drinking. And so that's one of the things that we're responding to in our response as a health council. Amongst youth, there are various other rates that you can see up there that are above state level, and so we're responding to that as well. The good news is that it's trending down, and you could see here since 2019, it has been moderately going down. So we want to work to continue to make sure that it continues to go down. Around mental health, we find that Grant County has one of the highest rates around diagnosed depression. And so that's another thing we're responding to amongst adults. In this slide here, you can see various mental health and suicide issues for youth. And again, this is very rather high as well, but you can see that this is also trending down, so we want to continue to work on that. And then also, just briefly, I wanted to introduce a few people to you. So we had a transition in staff in November. Our coordinator made it known to us that she's moving to Utah to pursue some educational pursuits, and we do miss her, and she did a great job, but I want to introduce you to our new coordinator. And I'll just have her introduce herself.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Emma Eileen McKinley. I see some familiar faces. Some of you may know me from my work with Silver Regional Sexual Assault Support Services and Child Advocacy Center, which is where I've been for the past half a decade. And I'm really excited to step into this new opportunity to take a broader scope on health issues in Grant County. As all of you have chosen to be part of this endeavor, I know that you're all big-picture people, and so you know that health of a community is not just about individual choices. It is about individual choices, of course, but it's not just about that. If someone makes an individual choice to be healthier, but they don't know where to go, they're part of a culture that encourages unhealthy behaviors or are part of communities that don't allow them to make those positive changes, then that individual choice isn't going to go very far. So we're looking forward to partnering with everyone that we possibly can to make sure that Grant County is a place where people are able to make healthy choices and able to make healthy changes and work towards being a place where we have really good health outcomes. Because like Mr. Hill said, we are trending down in a lot of these poor health behaviors. And so we want to continue those downward trends in poor health behaviors, encourage upward trends in good health behaviors, and really encourage Grant County to be a place that's a healthy place to live, work, and be.
We're very excited for Emma as an addition, and also I want to introduce to you our DOH Health Promotion Specialist, Cassandra.
Hi, everybody. My name is Cassandra Jewell. I am the new DOH Health Promotion Specialist for Grant and Hidalgo Counties. I'm a Grant County native, was born and raised here. I also hold a community health worker certificate through the state and have been one for about two years now. Previously, I worked with HMS, and I know the struggles of our county, I'm very familiar with it. And I'm happy to be with the Department of Health to be able to help actually make an impact now. So, thank you.
So we're excited. We've been very busy. We've had a lot of great things happen in the community. We have a great team aligned. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Hill.
Yes, sir.
I understand behavioral health, mental health. I have no problem. We have a lot of great people working on that, but it seems sometimes that agencies trend to go after the money because that's a big issue, rightfully so. I'm not complaining on that. I don't know if I missed it or you don't have it up here. My thing is the elderly. You know, I know we have our senior centers. That's where I want some of this focus also. I've been saying that for six years. You know, I see behavioral health, mental health, I see all that. It's great, the overdose, the kids, believe me, I'm on board with all that. I think we just need to expand a little bit more to our elderly, because our elderly, being healthy is also that social aspect and being there to help them and refer them to different programs that are out here in Grant County. A lot of our seniors do not access internet, do not have cell phones to text. Some do. I would really like to see, before I walk off of this stage in two years, somebody actually work on that, and I've asked the Health Council to do that for so many years. Could, so could you please help me with that?
Yes, absolutely, and I agree with everything you said. And as you mentioned before, a lot of times the efforts do fall along the funding streams. Last year, we did a survey in the community and assessed what were the top needs. We based our priorities on those top needs. This is why every senior, every senior initiative, every senior health fair, we've not only participated in, in many cases, we've been a driving force of it. The funding is harder to come by for senior issues, and so that is why you see an emphasis on behavioral health, because it's, we just have access to that funding. However, we continue to seek those funding opportunities. In the meantime, we do make as much space as we can with what we have available to support any senior initiative. And currently in our senior, and currently in our steering committee, it's very well, it's a very well-represented issue. And the people that are on our steering committee, the people that participate in the Health Council meetings, this is one of the top issues. It's one of the things that is discussed mostly because it's one of the top issues in the county.
I don't know what your grant say or as far as behavioral, you know, behavioral or mental health. I don't know what the requirements are to distribute or use that funding, but, you know, maybe looking at it, can it? Because I do feel that a lot of our mental health and behavioral health are really mental health issues. You know. Anyway, can we look at that funding to see maybe expand it, trying to incorporate some of our seniors? I don't know what the writings say, but I'll leave that up to you. That's just my request, but thank you.
Thank you for that.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions or questions? Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you for your work. As a social worker, I really appreciate your efforts to revitalize the Behavioral Health Collaborative. I was just curious, logistically, like, how often do you have meetings? And how do you try to engage behavioral health providers in the community to make sure that you're all, you know, collaborating and not duplicating services and identifying gaps in services? Like, do you have? Like, do you have monthly meetings or how does that work?
Yeah, well, the good news is, and I'll back up and explain the structure of how we're running LC six. So what we do is instead of having one meeting and asking everybody to come to that meeting, we actually have an in-person meeting every quarter in each county and it rotates, right? So every three months, it's going to show up in each county. And we have that discussion. The good news is the health councils were already having those discussions and they've already been integrating these things and and working on the issues of duplication of efforts and things of that nature. C H I has been working on that specifically in this county for a bit. And so we've had a little, we've had a little head start on that, particularly in this county. But the good news also is that we're able to discuss this with the other counties because the reality is in this region, most people seek services within the region rather than just in their community. So the main thing has really been about connecting the conversations that are already being had. And so that's where we found success. But that's also what we're trying to do to ensure that this actually works and doesn't go dormant again like it did before.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next presentation. Be the County Livestock Loss Authority, the Chairman, Sandra Queen McQueen.
Yes, so good morning, Commissioner. I'm the Commissioner in Katrin County and then the Chair of the C L L A. And just wanted to give you guys a little presentation of what the C L L A is. It stands for County Livestock Loss Authority. And I don't, I know that Grant County is starting to get a little bit of problems from the wolves with livestock producers. Katrin County is inundated with them. And now as well as Socorro County is starting to really get hit and Sierra County. So two years ago, we decided to get together as three counties and inform the C L L A so that we could get money and refund the producers for the problems they're having. And so we were successful last year into going to Santa Fe to the legislature. We asked for nine million for the next two years. They ended up giving us one point five million, which it was a start. And then there's a little bit of federal monies that we get to try to compensate the ranchers for their losses. It's, there's some ranchers, ranchers in Katrin and Socorro right now that are losing thirty-five, forty percent of their calf crop. And it's just with with the market right now, a calf's worth eighteen hundred to two thousand dollars. It's just some, we've got to be compensated for it. So I brought the forms and stuff so that whenever your producers are getting hit, they'll know what to do. It is even though it's the J P A's, it's born with the three counties, it's statewide. So if Grant, Grant County would be interested in getting this to their producers and there's, we pay for indirect damages, which is could be like light, light birth weights or slept calves, stuff like that. And then there's conflict avoidance, whether you want to get a range rider or just your hours spent trying to prevent the depredations. And then every quarter, we have, there's three doctors at the university that put together a a report for the for depredation loss so that we stay at the market price on that. And hopefully it'll get better because as we know, like, if you lose a two-year-old heifer cow and the calf, you're going to get compensated for the cow, possibly the calf if it was born alive. But you're not going to get compensated for the rest of the years you would have had. And so we're slow off the ground, but I'm hoping the more we work at it, the better we can get. And then and hopefully maybe push to get a little bit of management of the wolves. And I think their numbers are getting close to where they're, where they could maybe de-list for a while. But until then, we just got to try to try to compensate our producers. So I'll stand for any questions.
You know, during your presentation, I think you said registered, ranchers getting registered. Did I misunderstand that? Or I guess my question would be, if I understood it right, how do they register?
Okay, I'm sorry. So you don't have to register. It, we have a website and you can go on if you've had a depredation loss or if you've had wolves on your property, you can fill out these forms online and email them to the administrator. And I, if I can leave these with you guys.
Yes, ma'am.
That'll give you the website and the depredation forms and stuff to get to your producers if you have anybody starting to get wolf problems.
Thank you. Commissioner, do you have any question? Commissioner Shelley, do you have a question?
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation and coming, coming to see us and inform us about this. So my question is, is, is this only for depredations due to wolves? Or is it depredations from any predator?
This is just for wolves.
Okay. And is with the, with the three counties that that formed the foundation or decided to get together to do something about it? Wasn't there already a program established through the federal government, through Fish and Wildlife Service or something like that that would compensate ranchers? And why was this necessary to form the C L L?
So yes, sir, there was a program that was called the Coexistence Council. And they were always a year to two years out making payments. U S Fish and Wildlife wanted to be done with it. So when the three counties agreed to take it on and form the C L L, they were real happy to be out of the depredation business.
Okay, thank you. And is there a benefit, say, if Grant County entertained the idea of becoming a member of the three county coalition? Is, is there a benefit for Grant County from your perspective to do that?
I think so because whenever we go back to the legislature, obviously, I think the more counties that are involved, the better chance we have of getting funding.
Okay, and currently, is this working? Are you able to compensate? I mean, right now, has it been successful to actually compensate for depredation losses?
It has, yes. We've had some bumps in the road, but I think to date, we've already paid out like four hundred thousand dollars in kills. And we're almost, we're almost caught up on all the depredations for twenty-four. And, and then we're still working on the conflict avoidance and indirect damages for actually years, twenty-two, twenty-three getting out. A lot of it that we took on was stuff that wasn't paid from the Coexistence Council. And then there's, there's like four different pots of money that we're working with from federal to state to counties money. And so it's been a little challenging, but I, it's, it's, it's a lot better than what we had.
And has there been any, I guess, opposition or backlash to getting compensation for those ranchers? Like litigation or anything like that that you're experiencing as a, as a coalition there?
There was a, so it's public knowledge, there was an ethics claim filed on three of our board members. It would have been myself, Nelson Shirley, and Tom Patterson because we were producers on the board that lose livestock. That went through the Ethics Commission. And it took about three months and they actually ruled that there was nothing done unethical. Everything was on board. So right now, I think everything's good to go, but it was bumpy for a while.
So you're not foreseeing a lot of opposition to doing what's right to compensate those, those, for those losses?
I don't think so. It, I was spent a good time in the legislature last year. And for the most part, everybody was in support of getting the ranchers funded, taking care of for their losses.
Thank you.
You know, Commissioner Shelley, when Commissioner Foulas brought this idea up, I mean, at the least, you know, hopefully going through this process and having a commissioner on that board, at least we get the information. Because I know that when they had gone to the, to the legislature and they had asked for money, I knew a little bit about it. But at the end of the day, I don't have all the information or or any of the stats or really heard about all this. So I think it'd be a good idea just to have one of our commissioners on there. At least it's for information and we're aware of what's happening, not only in our Grant County, but the other counties also. So that was my biggest, biggest interest in all this, you know, and I understand your questions and concerns. But, you know, for me, it's a lot of information that could be helpful to Grant County. If not anything just to for down the road to, you know, look at what's hitting us and and help some of our ranchers and the farmers, et cetera. That's my two cents. Commissioner Mathina?
That's why I tell you, thank you for bringing this to our attention. This is important for our ranching community, not being aware of it or how the, how the organization works. I think, I think moving forward and working together is going to be really beneficial for our people. Thank you.
Commissioner Foulas.
Mr. Chair, thank you for the, for the presentation. You mentioned it's a forty to fifty percent loss in the calves last year, is that correct?
Some ranchers.
Some ranchers. If, if we didn't have this program, how would they get compensated and how long would it take?
They wouldn't. There's, there's, F S A has a program called L I P that they can get compensated from that. You, I'll just give you the numbers. If you lose a calf that's a four-week calf, they're going to pay you about six hundred and fifty dollars. So you, there's a little compensation, compensation through that, but nothing like what the C L A would do where you're close to getting some compensation.
Thank you. My, I guess my, my other question is, when a rancher files a claim for a loss and it is proven to be a wolf loss, what's the time period for the time he files to the time he gets compensated?
So our goal is two weeks. It hasn't been that. We've had, like I said, some bumps in the road. And right now, it's taken about six weeks. We're hoping, we, we hired a new administrator. They're in the process of moving the fiscal agent to Katrin County. We're waiting on D F A to get that done. And we've got the administrator in-house in Katrin County. So it should, it should, the process should get a lot better than what it's been. And it was, you know, we were all new, starting out, trying to figure out how it all worked. So it was, it was bumpy, but I do think it's a good program. And the ranchers in Katrin and Socorro are very happy with it.
And you answered one of my questions with Commissioner Shelley. You've paid out close to four hundred thousand dollars, right? Is that correct?
Correct.
And I, Mr. Chair, I too agree with your comments is that I think this is long overdue. I think the, the ranchers, not just in my district, but I think, I know for the entire Grant County, most times, they just take it as a hit. And, and that'd be hard for, to ask any one of us here just to take an eighteen hundred dollar hit and, and brush it off and move on because as we all know, times are a lot different. Things are a lot more expensive. And I'm very, very happy to hopefully be a part of this, to represent Grant County and be the voice for the ranchers in Grant County to finally get compensated. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Foulas.
Would you guys like me to bring these up?
You know, one thing I want to tell you is I apologize on you, you were a commissioner. I apologize, Commissioner, for not introducing you as a commissioner, so thank you. Okay, moving on to the next item is going to be a director's reports. Fire chief.
Do I hear that again? Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, staff, elected officials, and ladies and gentlemen in the audience. So currently I've been working on a project for assisting our state fire marshal with a financial report that they've requested a review. And that's taken a considerable amount of time. There we go. So we're coming to the end of that pretty quickly. I'm meeting with our support service representative from the state fire marshals on the seventeenth. And hopefully that will move that along and there may be some findings, but we'll see what it brings. Today and tomorrow, I'll be tied up with the state fire marshal. They're here to do some inspections of some of our fire stations down on upper members and lower members. And we'll be conducting that this afternoon and tomorrow morning. Currently helping out the departments with the Public Employees Retirement Association reports that will be coming due in March. And we're, we're getting those prepared for, to be submitted to para. Our county chipper program has seen a bit of an increase. The one thing I'm finding is people want the chipper for a little bit longer term. We normally wouldn't give it to them for three days to four days, but the last couple have asked for a week. And we could work that into the schedule, so I'm kind of been working with that to provide a more thorough service for the people that are coming in to rent the chipper. Also been attending trainings and meetings with our volunteer fire departments. They meet and train some of them several times a month. So I've been busy with that. We're constantly doing training or looking for training. Right now, we're getting our wildland training, required training bumped up, refresher classes that are required to be held. And we're moving along very nice with those so that we can be ready. Wildland season never leaves here. It's always with us and we have drought even more so. So the Forest Service last week took the forest from high to very high as far as fire danger, threat of fire. So we're meeting, meeting with some of the folks in the Forest Service with the Rural Chiefs later this month to discuss some strategy and tactics. I believe Mr. Fuller might touch on that. But the, the last item, a project that's been an ongoing, I got our side by side, county side by side, just about ready to, to put into effect for fire suppression and if we needed to bring out somebody up from a search and rescue or transport searchers in and out of the forest, which we've used our side by sides a couple of times for doing that. So things are pretty dry out there, as you know. Our windy months are soon approaching and if we don't see some moisture, I think we're going to have our hands full. I think all of our members recognize the conditions we're in. And they've been doing a good job of training. We did have a number of structured fires in the last few weeks that I also participated in suppression of those. So it's been busy. And there hasn't been any discussion from the forest or the state that I've been included in or made aware of, of imposing any, any restrictions yet. So I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Do you have any questions? Commissioner Stevens?
I remember reading about the chipper program in the daily press, but what's the best way for the public to learn about and access that program?
Okay, right now, it's, they call me or come by the office. And I've been getting a number of phone calls about it. We are running some radio spots that are also advertising the chipper and my contact information. It was pointed out to me that we didn't have on, on the website. And so I'm looking into getting that added to the website. Um, it was pointed out to me that we didn't have on on the website and so I'm looking into getting that added to the website. And I think there's a county Facebook page that we could probably add that as well, where there'll be some information where they can, uh, reach out to or get numbers, how much, you know, it costs to rent and how the whole program works.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll ask you. Sheriff, how many side by sides do you have?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We currently have two side by sides and three A T Vs.
Thank you. Any other questions for the chief?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Thank you so much for the update and what you do. How is the county sitting as far as recruitment to volunteer fire departments?
Right now we seem to be in a in a low, it's kind of slow. I I I don't have an accurate number to tell you. I'm sure that through our eight departments, in the last month, there's been some new members coming into some of them. But it has been slow. We typically see in the winter months kind of a decrease in activities, therefore we have a decrease in people that want to join out. But, uh, most of them have numbers right now that are meeting the requirements, most of them, so.
And since it's a volunteer aspect, I'm wondering if we do enough to, uh, thank them publicly, acknowledge that absolutely fantastic service that they do for the citizens of our county. And I'm wondering if we're if there's any ideas, things we could do better to, uh, I don't know, do something, uh, because it's hard to recruit for volunteer things. Everybody who's volunteered for everything knows that.
Yes, sir.
And this one takes a lot of time and training to do in addition. So, uh, maybe there's some way through positive reinforcement, people can say, yeah, that's something I would like to do.
I try to do that every opportunity I get with our volunteers. I'm sure that, um, and I was a volunteer for many years, I still am with Tyrone. I'm sure that some sort of recognition day, proclamation, something along those lines would probably go a long way. I would I would like to ask, um, our chiefs and some of our firefighters to attend. We don't see a lot of big attendance when we've asked them to come because a lot of them are working. But, uh, we also had some appreciation days and and kind of a public show of equipment and things like that where we used to set up at different locations and the public could come and see the equipment and and talk with some of the firefighters. And I think that those were positive things. Um, I do know from the the emails and letters that I've been getting, uh, from the state level, there's some legislation being discussed about some tax incentives and things like that for for the firefighters throughout the state. But I think anything that we can do, um, would be a positive thing, absolutely, sir.
So have we ever done a volunteer firefighter day, uh, sort of recognition?
I I think there's been some things along those lines, yes, sir, over the years and and, uh, this is going back quite a ways, but I know we had a, uh, like a, I I don't know if you'd call it a fair or something. We had a bunch of engines and and things out for the public to come in and and see and some of the elected officials were were there. Uh, and that was some of the firefighters and, uh, yes, so we have had some of those things, um, in the past, yes, sir.
And then I guess the final related question is, um, I may have missed, but do we have like, uh, exceptional recognitions for people? Have we already done that? If they went above and beyond the volunteer capacity?
We awarded, uh, some commendation bars here, I think it was in June, um, for some firefighters that were involved in a life saving incident, uh, out in the Members Valley. And as things like that occur, I would certainly like to have, uh, some of the firefighters come in, uh, you know, life save, something along that line or, you know, just years of service. We've got some people that have been doing it a long, long time. And maybe we we can have some of them come in and meet at a at a commission meeting and you could meet them and we could recognize some of the long, long service of some of these folks. There've been, there's a number out there that have been involved a long time.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Thanks so much.
Commissioners, any other questions, comments? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next up detention director, Mr. Anzola.
Good morning, Chairman Commissioners. Uh, we currently have four officer openings at the detention center. We have one officer in training. Uh, we are going through background checks on four applicants for the detention center, so that would make us fully staffed. Accreditation update, there was a really great accreditation presentation at the legislative session from Captain Fleming from the Doniana Detention Center and also Lieutenant Baradas from the lieutenant, from the Doniana Detention Center. They went over a lot of pitfalls that facilities, uh, fall into with the accreditation process. They also really emphasized on the medical portion of the accreditation process. That's where a lot of facilities have a lot of issues. He also gave a presentation on the power DMS and, uh, gave a lot of pointers on how to standardize that power DMS to make it easier for the auditors to, uh, look through that. So what we are doing currently is following those suggestions and and making some changes to the power DMS and putting those bullet points in order that they were looking for. Uh, Captain Fleming is one of the auditors for the accreditation process and then Lieutenant Baradas is running the accreditation for Doniana. Uh, they have invited us to go over there to make sure that we do understand that bullet point process. We might take them up on that. We appreciate that help from that. Medical last week to go over the standards for our medical. Uh, we're about halfway done with that and also we're we're currently updating that power DMS like I just stated. We are talking to Captain Fleming to do a walkthrough audit, kind of a mock audit in, uh, mid summer, late summer. And then to talking to Fleming, we're going to do the actual, uh, facility inspection, uh, late, early, late fall and that gives us approximately three to four months to fix any findings they have before the deadline of March of twenty twenty six. On January thirty first, our population was ninety three detainees with an average daily population for January of ninety three. As of Tuesday, February fourth, we've had zero COVID positives. And in January twenty twenty five, we've had thirty RISE participants with thirteen in the facility and seventeen in the community. With projects, our portable building is in place and we're just finishing the setups. Uh, electricity was put in plumbing setup. Uh, this week and next week, we're working on a camera system and setting up the building. Uh, I'd really like to get that in place for the commission inspection that we're going to schedule. Also, we're talking to, uh, maintenance and county manager and moving forward on our shower project with a date to be set. Uh, we all, we are looking at the the plans for a greenhouse for our RISE. Uh, one of the things that portable building we're looking at doing is family reunification with the detainees in the RISE program, the family. Oftentimes a lot of detainees that are in the facility have children in CYFD custody, which we do visit sometimes at CYFD and sometimes the facility. Being short-staffed in in both departments, it's kind of hard, but we thought with that portable building, we could make it more family friendly and do programming there also. With that greenhouse, we could have the RISE participants grow their own food and vegetables and and use that as a way to reunify reunify with their family cooking within that portable. Uh, we were working with H R, we did some promotions for Sergeant Corporals. Um, I do think that's important to recognizing them. Uh, we did promotions approximately three weeks ago. We have been holding supervisor meetings every Wednesday. So I think it's important also that we realize that a days off are important. So I will introduce them one at a time when they're available at these commission meetings. I'd like to congratulate, uh, promotions for Sergeant Morales, Sergeant Brandon Olivier, Sergeant Dylan Rivera, Corporal Gabriel Contreras, Corporal Alexis Olson, and Corporal Caleb Schefflin. They work really hard and and really learn hard in a lot of facilities. Most of our supervisors have been there approximately maybe a year and a half or two years and they've really stepped up and they've tried to learn and they're continuing to learn. I really appreciate them doing that. We've been holding the supervisor meetings to kind of get more structure and get that accountability within our facility, especially for the accreditation process that we're going through this year. Key event dates, uh, we are going to schedule the detention center commission inspection probably in March. I know that I was talking to Amy on that, we're going to schedule in March. I'd really like to get that portable building up and running and operational for that inspection. Also, within your packet, you're going to start seeing a restrictive housing quarterly report. I think the quarter we have now is the second or third quarter of twenty twenty four. Per state statute, we have to present a quarterly report on all special restrictive housing inmates. Uh, every quarter we have to report that to the legislature and also to the permission. But a restrictive housing detainee is it's any detainee that spends more than twenty two hours within the cell. Uh, we work really hard with the facility to make sure everybody gets one hour of recreation every day and everybody gets at least two hours, two and a half hours out of their cell time. Uh, one of the difficulties we have is we have a lot of detainees that come in detoxing from various, uh, substances. So oftentimes, uh, medical has to work really hard within the week or two to stabilize them. And also we've seen a rise in of severe mentally ill, uh, detainees that have severe mental illness. Uh, medical and detention facility has worked really hard to get those stabilized also. So we have seen a drop in the number of restrictive detainees in restrictive housing. We just want to continue to work that to get that list smaller and smaller and make sure everybody gets their out of cell time. Supporting guidance, I did update the five year plan. I'll make sure that, uh, all that gets to you before the inspection. And I think also what I'm going to put on that five year plan is a timeline for the accreditation process also. And then we could discuss that that day of inspection. I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Ward, and Anzola. I have a two-part question here. Can you, uh, tell me, tell me again, you might have presented it last month, but we have ninety three average, uh, detainees. What's our capacity?
Our capacity is approximately ninety five to a hundred. We do have the booking cells and the observation area cells where they could keep it on medical. But those cells are just temporary holding to get the their initial court scene and then house them in population. So we could house approximately ninety five to a hundred. Uh, when it gets up to ninety five, it starts getting a little bit uncomfortable. However, we do see a change in our detainee status, uh, where we have not a lot of issues because a lot of them are just, uh, recovering, uh, from substance abuse and a lot of them have some severe mental issues. So, uh, we try to keep them up in medical to stabilize them in booking and then try and house them in the back. Uh, we have seen our numbers stay pretty high within the last, I'd say, two quarters. Uh, so we're just working with that and, uh, I know I talked to Charlene about that and and that's why part of the RISE program is to really work on these detainees to stop that recidivism, have people keep coming back from jail. And I think it's working really well and just, we're really looking forward to to, uh, expanding RISE and a lot of other programs to help these people stay out of jail and and just become, uh, participants in our community because we all are community members here.
Thank you. And on the restricted housing, is for these detainees, they have to have their own, there has to be a unique, uh, place where they're where they're detained by themselves?
Yes, oftentimes, uh, there's issues, uh, due to problems with, um, in within the community or from the facility. Uh, sometimes their charges play a part of that. But I'd say for the most part, it's those detoxing from substances and and kind of coming in really in, uh, bad medical shape that we have to keep an eye on them to make sure they're okay. And also those severely mentally ill. As you tour our facility, you notice that a lot of our facility is laboratory style. So it's very difficult to classify someone and put someone with severe mental illness within that pot because those detainees in there are going to only put up with that individual for so long because sometimes they have outbursts and you're just not really conducive to, uh, social setting like that. But we have gotten really good at stabilizing with the doctor, with their mental health, uh, getting them on medication, getting them to that therapeutic level and then they're able to go back to population and socialize with the others. On that list, you'll find that we do it by male, female, by age, by reason that they're in special management, restrictive housing, and then how long they're on there. Uh, we work really hard to shorten that timeframe that they're in restrictive housing and stabilize them and get them classified and house them to general population.
And what's our capacity for this restricted housing?
Um, we do have, uh, several units in the back with a unit, we have a unit with three cells which we could use, which are kind of used for our disciplinary separation if you pick up reports within the facility. We also have another unit that has seven cells, which four of those could be double bunk. Uh, we do kind of use that for for per se restrictive housing with people that have issues with the other, uh, units or people that have severe mental illness. However, due to that definition of restrictive housing per state statute, as long as we give them two hours out or more time, they're not classified as restrictive housing. So a lot of those people we do keep an eye on, but because we give them a lot of, a lot of cell time and a lot of congregate socialization within that pot, they're not considered restrictive housing per that state statute. So we are kind of using that, but they're not, uh, considered this the restrictive housing because of the state statute and the hours of time we get out. They go outside for approximately one hour and then varying on the degrees of who's in there. Sometimes we let them out all day or we break it down to groups that way they're out at least two hours a day.
Thank you. We're we're very lucky to have you. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner Foulas?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Anzola, thank you, um, for your work and congratulations on being fully staffed here in the near future. That's that's hard to do to do in today's world.
Thank you.
How many of the inmates that are currently housed are serving under county time, under magistrate time?
It's kind of hard to, uh, give that number because I'd say most of our detainees are in there for several charges. They're usually, uh, probation violators with the state and also have charges within the county. I do know that, uh, that we do charge the municipalities for housing detainees, but it's up to law enforcement where they charge. They could charge either municipalities or or through the magistrate court, which is of the state. So if they get charged through the magistrate court, um, we do not charge them because we do charge the municipalities. I know that the legislative session, we did discuss charging the state for dual supervision if they're on probation and parole or if they're on parole or if they're sentenced to, uh, DOC. I know we work really well with the sheriff's department. Once they're sentenced, we get them out there pretty quick within a week or two to the DOC. And oftentimes we have a really good relationship with probation parole, who does the parole hearings in Las Cruces. So any parole violators that come through the facility are pretty much gone in a week or two. So that is an issue, uh, because most of our population are probation violators. And I know that New Mexico counties is working really hard on getting more funding from the state to reimburse counties for holding, uh, state inmates. Uh, they're looking at various ways and and various systems to give access to all detention centers so we don't have to be sending information. They could just access our jail management systems and develop more stats that way and get more funding from the state. Because, uh, as you all know, and and they presented up in the legislative session, the state does not really reimburse us probably anything near that they should.
Thank you. I I the reason I ask as well, thank you for that thorough answer, um, very informative. But I, uh, had brought this up, uh, sometime in the last couple, two or three weeks. But have you ever thought of using the trustees? And I know you call them something other than trustees now. But have you ever thought of using those trustees that are sentenced under the county time to some sort of a, uh, work program on the highways, on the roads, picking up garbage, cutting weeds, anything like that? Because I know, um, that that's done in other parts of the state with with detention facilities. Have have you ever thought of that? And if so, what's holding you back and if you don't like it, why?
So when I first came to the detention center back in two thousand and eleven, they did have, uh, trustees going out with different, uh, they were going out with maintenance actually and we do And we do do the work program with the DOC. One thing that I saw here is that at the time, the people that run the detention center were kind of letting any detainee go out. And you have to be very careful of who you let go out because that could be classified property. And if you have significant charges of a detainee or a detainee that's a probation parole or parole inmate, they're still DOC inmates, they're just kind of released into the community. So you can't really let them out because if you have issues or problems, that's really not the county's inmate. So we did change it to where you have to be sentenced to the facility, sentenced to the county to go out. However, those numbers are relatively low and we do use, we do call them porters now. One of the things we discussed is trustees have a unique term that you really can't trust a detainee. You have to keep an eye on them. So at the prison, we call them porters. We do use porters in the kitchen to assist the company that's contracted, and we do use porters to clean the facility. And they do get special privileges, a little bit of extra portions of food, a little bit of commissary. So we do make sure that those areas are covered first that we need in the facility. And then also, I think it's something to look at. We'd have to have a joint partners agreement with the different municipalities. However, the detention centers and the DOC facilities that do do that do charge for that. And not only do they charge to pay the inmates a stipend of working and cleaning out, but they do charge for extra officers. And that's one of the issues we really had a hard time in the last several years is keeping and maintaining our staff to where we could fully function at the facility in a safe and secure manner. So it's kind of hard to have an officer break off and go take a group of detainees to clean when you're not even having enough in the facility to run the facility correctly. But that is something to look at. I do say that our population is growing with our people that are sent to the detention center. However, I think RISE is a very good program where those people sent to the detention center can actually program all day long. And that's something we're looking at doing in that portable building. And as we get in the phases of the RISE program, one of the things I think to look at would be something where they can go out in the community and not only clean, will go out in the community to participate. I know that juvenile probation is wanting some of our RISE people to go talk to the kids that aren't in school anymore, which we've done that one time. They're also looking at going to the portable and having a RISE, detainees talk to the kids, give them a road for the tour. Nothing like a scare-strike program, but just being honest and open. The difficulties of detention, the difficulties that it is on your family, I'm not seeing your kids. So that is something that we can look at in the future and get with the county manager and look at that joint cars agreement with the different municipalities.
Thank you. I definitely think it would be something worth looking at, especially since we're going to be fully staffed here in the near future. And it would certainly give the inmates time outside. They'd be active and they'd be paying back to society in that type of way, picking up maybe garbage on the road to the detention center, something like that. But thank you for looking into it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Foulness. I guess I have a request. I don't know the request, if it goes to the county manager, finance, or you. But I'd really like for these commissioners to get the reimbursement. I know a couple of years or three years ago, it was like $65,000 and we put the math to it, what it cost us a day to house an inmate. And then I think the state sent us $65,000, which is totally lopsided. Sort of, and I'm sort of glad you brought this up. It just, you know what, I'm going to say it. So, you know, we go in front, sometimes we go in front of the LFC committee from Santa Fe, and they talk to us about, you know, you have this money, we gave you this money, your projects aren't getting done, you're behind on your projects. But there's a whole process that it takes. And if you really look at, you know, we just got money a month ago, two months ago, that was allotted to us from the state a while back. You know, and they're asking us about this money, but then yet they're not reimbursing us the way they should be reimbursing us for our detention center. She is right, that's a big issue with New Mexico counties and the board of directors, and we've discussed that a lot. So it'd be good. The other thing, my question, I guess, would be, do we have a classification officer in the Grand County Detention Center? Or is somebody trained to do that?
Currently, we have our shift staff in booking trained for classification. We are looking at maybe having a specialty post where that person is not only a classification, but kind of a records person. One of the issues that we run into with such a high turnover rate is learning the process of being a detention officer. And I've said this before, I think it takes approximately a year to two years to develop a well-known detention officer. And you probably shouldn't be a corporal unless you have five, six years, and a sergeant should be seven or eight. We don't have that because we lose people within a year and a half, two years. Like I said, these new sergeants or corporals stepped up. They've been there approximately a year and a half, two years. One of the hardest things in the detention center is learn the booking process and learn the court paperwork process. And oftentimes, it changes with new judges or new DAs. So that's a difficult thing to really focus on and learn is that court process to see if it's a good release. Or like I said, the detainee has several state charges, has magistrate charges. She'll have to go through six or seven cases to make sure all cases have been adjudicated. So that's something that's very important because we don't want to release anyone that shouldn't be released in the facility, and it has happened in the past. So as of right now, administration is the only one authorized to do any releases. It does get tough on weekends because we have to review files on the weekends also. So we're looking at, as the experience we do have in the detention center, we have approximately two or three individuals that have almost five years there or some that are just really great at that kind of file paperwork. So we're looking at maybe looking at a specialty post of a classification officer slash records that gets that court paperwork, organizes it, makes sure those detainees are classified properly. And they've worked Monday through Friday, kind of like a dispositionist clerk. I know Luna County has that, Doniana County has that. So that's something that we're looking at also within that accreditation process.
Thank you. Any other questions, commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioner, and you have a good day.
Next report's going to come from our emergency manager, Mr. Scott, and code enforcement also.
Good morning, commissioners, county manager. Give my report. The first thing I want to go over is the hazard mitigation plan. It finally went up to the state on February 3rd to be approved by them. I think y'all saw the email. I put the plan on the county's website for public review and comments. By FEMA requirements, it has to be there two weeks for comment. So I'm hoping that people will look at it and tell me what they feel or tell me what could be better about it, lots there. It sits in the state, they'll look at it for about a month, and it goes to FEMA itself for the actual approval. So we're looking at a FEMA approval by sometime end of April, beginning of May. And after that part, the last piece, what comes back to us for a formal adoption by the commission. And that will have a fully FEMA-approved and adopted hazard mitigation plan. Most people don't realize how valuable this document is. It opens the door to so many grant funding opportunities, special mitigation grants, brick grants. There's a whole chapter in there, the last part talking about mitigation activities or suggestions. And all those, once they're in there, they're all open for FEMA funding. So it's good to have them all listed, and that makes them all eligible for FEMA funding. Going down the list, the grant from the Community Wildfire Defense Grant for the update of the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, the agreement with the state has been signed. I have that back and I'm trying to work with Andre and a lot of these through the RFP process, through the procurement process to select a vendor to complete the project. Hopefully, we'll have that done soon and can select a vendor. I think we have till summer of 2026 to get that completed to the state and back to the state for their approval. Mexico County's the wildfire reduction community outreach grant. I'm starting to work on that. We, I've worked with Sky West Media. We've developed some, I think, some nice rack cards to go out. A few thousand of those are going to be out. And we're also working on some public service messaging. It's all going to be related to getting people to understand everybody's concept of how it works and how important it is. And there's other grants out there, the hazard mitigation grant for the generators. We're trying to work to start that procurement process in the SHIC camp. But one of the problems we had, I guess, the U.S. Office of Budgeting and Management put a temporary hold on all grants a couple of weeks ago, and they kind of rescinded that. But the problem is, I think, it puts some stipulations where the grants, they want to ensure the grants align with the new ideology of the current administration. So I think they'll work through it. I spoke with the Department of Homeland Security yesterday, and hopefully they'll have it all resolved in the next week or two, and we can keep on moving on. So. I think that about covers it for the emergency management piece of it. Do you have any questions I can answer?
We're good, go.
After the question of the commission last month, Chairman Ponson wanted a report every month on code enforcement. So Code Enforcement Officer Fernandez put this together for the month of January. As most of you know, she was off for quite a bit of time last year with an injury. And she just came back sometime before Thanksgiving, and so she's gone back at it again. Right now, she has, she did eight court filings two weeks ago for cases, and she's got one court date assigned for next week on one case. Another thing is, and we talked about this, y'all mentioned it last meeting, she's got a lot of complaints about weeds in the county. But we really don't have an ordinance to enforce weed control in the county. I know the town of Silver City does, but the county does not have any way to enforce that type of ordinance on these folks. And there's a lot of, a lot of these pending cases. Eventually, may wind up with intervention from the commission to help resolve them. I know three of the ordinances, two of them in 2022, and the solid waste from 1999, all eventually will require intervention on your part. If we can't do it in a, you know, do the normal process, it'll eventually come across y'all to enforce a lien or whatever compensation to get back from the property owner to enforce the code enforcement on there. Do you have any other questions concerning code enforcement? I said she's been back to work and she's been at it pretty hard for the last two months.
We're good, thank you. I think, no, go ahead, Commissioner Stevens, sorry, I didn't see you.
Oh, that's okay. So I understand people can complain about enforcement issues. And is there any availability for our code enforcement officer to just like drive around and assess potential risks? Like structures that might be a risk? Do they have time to do that?
Yes, she does.
Okay. So she does that routinely, just kind of as a preventative measure?
Yes, she does.
Thank you.
Good, thanks.
Thank you.
Moving on to public works. Our airport manager, Ms. Rebecca, IT's not here.
Chairman Commissioners, I want to start out by thanking last year's commission for improving snow removal equipment for us. January nights, we had a snow event out there that was kind of unique for us. The snow came in and then the temperature started dropping. And ordinarily, we just drive up and down on the runway with our arc truck and our other trucks, just trying to break it up and wait for the sun to come out. Well, this was a unique opportunity for us where we had everything ready to go, we had our de-gassing chemical. And there were a couple of minutes where we thought we were losing the runway, but we were able to keep up with it and we kept it open. You know, any delays, we're not on the county. And my guys are very comfortable with the equipment now. So I know we're Southern Arizona, but this is really a big thing for me. So, yeah, that was just a really good test for us. And, you know, we now have all the equipment we need to be able to, you know, keep the runway open and, you know, also manage other aspects of our facility maintenance. So thank you again. Briefings. So I think you all received, or most of you probably received, an email from the U.S. DOT about our essential air service being extended through the 28th of this month. This is just, I wish I had a better explanation of how things are going right now, but I don't. We actually had, our bids were in in July. We were required to provide our comments by August. And every month, I keep getting the same, we're just waiting for signatures. We're just waiting for signatures. And that's the same line that I'm getting at this point. I've spoken with Advanced Air, and they said that they're getting the same assurances that we are and that, you know, they're just supposed to proceed as normal. So as soon as I have any more information, I'll be providing that to you. This month, we were required to submit our annual stormwater monitoring reports for the year. I got those into the EPA, we didn't have any issues. But the EPA has now, has a new proposal out for, it's called the National Pollution Discharge Elimination, relates to stormwater that comes off your facility. To date, we have not been required to do discharge monitoring. We go out, if we have a storm event, I take a look at it, make sure that it doesn't have a sheen or, you know, anything else. Well, now they're starting to talk about having our airport sector, along with a lot of others, have to do specific analytic sampling, which would really drive up the cost of the program. I mean, at this point, it's my time, I have a background in environmental management, so I've been able to handle it myself. But we would have to do testing and probably look in at over $6,000 a year. And this is for our five-year permit. And so comments are open until the 11th. I've been working with the State Airport Managers Association. We're trying to get a cohesive response put in for the state as well as each of our counties. It could be very burdensome. And with us, we can go a whole year and not have any stormwater discharge. We have a lot of dirt out there. I mean, it has to be an epic, you know, monsoon that comes through for us to get a discharge. So we'd pretty much be stuck with all of these requirements for the five-year conditions for each of the years. So, yeah. Let's see here, we will be meeting with the tanker base on the 26th of this month. Last year, some of you may not know, our tanker base, they were turning around a really big plane, and they put the tip of the wing into one of our hangers. And so when they came in and did their safety review, they basically just shut down the base. They had a lot to catch up on as far as the paperwork and training. They feel that they're in a good position. We're all concerned, of course, that this is going to be quite the year. From operational standpoint, the airport, we're in a good position. Our fuel farm is fully up functioning, we have capacity, we have the trucks we need. So we're ready. If it started tomorrow, we'd be on top of it. So hopefully, we'll have a good meeting with them and, you know, we try to work out logistics of placing planes and, you know, who's going to fuel what, you know, that type of thing. But we're ready, so hopefully this year goes good and we don't miss the fuel sales. So I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Being that Mr. Holin gave me the look, he probably missed him. So going back to our planning and capital projects director, sorry.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thanks for the opportunity to share the planning and capital projects update. Some of these are a little bit of review, but just wanted to kind of keep them on the schedule and let you guys know. The current projects that we have under construction are the Upper Mimbres Valley Fire Department, our volunteer fire departments. We have underground storage tanks going in at the main station. Battery has been laid out, and they're doing excavation on that this week. So in the next coming weeks, they're going to continue to remove that soil, get the tanks in underground, get all the plumbing in. They're going to have to route for, run electrical for a pump, and then they'll put a slab over the top of that, so we maintain parking in that parking lot. The North Hurley Roadway and Drainage Improvement Project, Phase Three, we're continuing to make progress on that. Drive pads, we're making progress there. Retaining walls, I think we're, have the last one formed up, and we're pumping into that one. And then, of course, we continue to work on soils for water diversion since that's such an issue there, that surface water drainage. These projects in the design phase, I mean, there's not a whole lot to re- These projects in the design phase, I mean, there's not a whole lot to report there. The public safety building, the courthouse renovation, and the new construction, and Franks and Crum Road, those are, if you will, from a status standpoint, we're still continuing to work with the architect and, and our civil engineers, and we're making headway on those. No major milestones to report there, though. As far as future projects, of course, we've been in, working a lot with Public Works Director Jason Lockett. So our LGRF projects, the local government road fund projects for 2025, I believe those are on the agenda. And then just a status update for our Colonia's projects in 2024. The three projects that we submitted last year and that were approved were improvements along Ridge Road. So we'll be continuing that work that was done, about terminated at Lance Drive, and that'll continue on Ridge Road all the way down to the detention center. The second project was Arenas Valley, of course. And so off of 180, near the Arenas Valley Animal Clinic, we're going to take and do some Chip Hill work along that and do some work on the shoulders and take that all the way up to Elias Road, near the Dragonfly Trailhead, and do some improvements there. Anytime you've driven that road, there's really no shoulder. There's no areas. It is kind of a hazardous area to, to work with. That is an area that does pull in a lot of tourism. There are events held out there. There's a lot of folks out there riding horses, bicycles, hiking. So we want to make that, that corridor, that pathway as safe as possible. And then the last Colonia's projects that was, was submitted last year and approved was the Little Walnut Project. And so where our work terminated in this, this recent phase, we're going to continue taking that roadway, hopefully up to the end of the pavement at the Little Walnut Campsite. So we've submitted all those ready-to-proceed items this last week with the help of Charlene and Andrea, of course. So that was a, a little bit of fun, you know. Felt like it was solving a puzzle while you're blindfolded, I guess. It was the first time doing that one for me, so that was a lot of fun getting to do that, but I appreciate the growing opportunity there. As far as requests for upcoming projects, the one thing you're going to have before you today, a resolution, is for the Colonia's, the 2025 projects. Of course, I just mentioned, and, you know, one of our projects we're going to be working on shortly is Arenas Valley. Well, now we're going to go ahead and tack on that next phase of it. So resolution for 2025 is... Yes, sir.
Could you just speak louder into the microphone? I know that some folks are having a hard time hearing you.
Sure thing. Great. So this last phase is for the Colonia's 2025. So Phase One was the design work. Phase Two is what was just approved for 2024. And then Phase Three is going to be the continuation of, of Phase Two. And so that would essentially take care of that old Arenas Valley loop that starts by the Arenas Valley Animal Clinic, goes all around that backside, and then finishes up by the Misa Migos. So, of course, all that roadway is, is really busy back there. And, and then some key event dates I just wanted to brief you guys on, of course, was that legislative conference we attended at the end of January. We really appreciate the support for that. It was a great opportunity to network and then understand upcoming projects for this year. And then later this month, we have, again, some LGRF training down in Deming on February 19th. So we have an administrative assistant in the planning department now, and she's going to be attending that with us, and she's going to be helping and overseeing that process with us as well. So I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Flores?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Holin, thank you for your work.
Yes, sir.
I know you do very well. A quick question. Do we own pickleball courts in the Cliffy area?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yes and no. It is, we have tennis courts out there, and they've converted, they play pickleball on them. So they've kind of converted them. However you do that to play pickleball, they'll play pickleball.
Yeah, I think that's what happened. Thank you.
But yes, they, they play pickleball there regularly.
And we own those courts. Is that correct?
Yes, it's in the Healer Community Center.
Great. I was contacted by a citizen there asking if, if we could possibly look at just maintaining them or adding, doing a little bit of work to them. Obviously, pickleball is a popular sport now, especially with an older group of people. But I told him that I would definitely bring it up at the next meeting, and if you could just look into it, I appreciate it.
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you both.
If I may, and then one last comment, just to follow up to Commissioner Medina. So I did reach out to Southwest COG about possible walkways along 35. So they're going to help us with some of that communication to them, and then when we're down for training on the 19th, I'll make sure to bring that up to DOT as well. So just wanted to make sure I close the loop on those items for you.
I know just recently all the commissioners received a notification on new district manager.
And I'll be sending him an email as well, and I'll attach you on it so you can see it, because I'd like to see that project before we all leave the area.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Commissioner.
Thank you. Any other, Commissioner Sheldon?
Commissioner, our, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Holin, on the Colonia's projects that were, are we going to be, we're going to be acting on, on those resolutions on Thursday? Is that right? And my only question is, is can I, is there a place? I read, I read the resolutions or the, the agreements that we need to approve, but it's sort of hard for me to see exactly where they are. I mean, I learned a little bit listening to you verbally. Are there maps that we can look at to gain a little bit of understanding what we're approving on those?
We can, we can get you a map to show you. You want to know what part of Arenas Valley that we're proposing?
Right. And then what, what the, there is, there is also like a sentence in there that says, okay, this is for chip sealing or whatever. And I think that's adequate. I think I get the gist of what the project is, but I was just looking for, I'm sort of visual and sort of want to, I thought we had like a, a, a map online that anybody can look at for what we're doing.
Yeah, I can definitely get you an area of work with that just to kind of give some basic parameters of what we're, we're looking at. And then, again, I can provide that scope work to you as well just, you know. So we're going to be working through that application process over the next couple of months. So right now, it's just the resolution for us to commit to say that we're, we would budget that money, and we're going to work through that application process. So I can give you as much detail as I have right now. I'll make sure to relay that through Ms. Webb.
Okay. And I didn't know if we were going to have additional discussion on those specific actions we need to take in this meeting. Okay, so I'll leave it for that. Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Holin. Moving on to, our next report is our facilities and ground maintenance director, or fleet maintenance director, I guess, and a road department director.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ms. Webb. Here to report on the rest of the public works, starting with the facilities maintenance. So our courthouse, holding cell projects 85% complete. We're replacing all the sanitary fixtures at our administration building. It's at 50% complete. The front railing system, you can see that rail system is going in as we speak now. Painting in the treasurer's office, we're 90%, 90% complete. The treasurer's office, solid waste and ADA storefront installation, that's about 98% complete. Painting of the detention center main hallways, the main hallway space is 65% complete. As far as future projects, conference center waterless urinal replaced, and a flooring replacement project is in the works in the near future. Administration building, employee designated outdoor space. Here in the back of our building, we're going to be putting a, an area for people to be able to eat outside and enjoy the sun on our breaks and things like that. I'll show the detention center training mock cell door installation. We're going to do, help out Mr. Arnezola and the staff over there. Also, as he reported, the detention center shower coating. Some notable accomplishments, I can show you with the, with the pictures. So that's part of the detention center hallway painting, which you can see there. Detention center field work, just keeping up. Victor does a really great job for us out there. He actually mowed all of that by hand with a weed eater, and so he likes to stay busy out there. Our holding cell progress at the courtroom there, the district court, you can see that, it's going to help out for Mr. Dylan O'Wheal and his, his staff to, to help out when they're doing things. I know so, Mr. Arnezola. Our bathroom fixture upgrades, pictures of the men's restroom here for the staff bathroom, new sinks, new faucets, auto flushables are all going in on all the bathrooms here. The break room, you see here in the back, that we got that finished up. Just a little repair. We were able to purchase some equipment that we can make some quicker repairs on things instead of soldering. And so as you can see, the left was repaired at some point that had been done. Now with these, these new machines and stuff that we can do, clamps. Technology is just changing all the time, and so we invested a little bit, and we can make repairs a whole lot quicker. And, and it just, it just helps us out instead of shutting the water down. And if any of you know about plumbing, where you have to solder and get all the water out, and then you have to heat it up, and sometimes valves don't hold and things like that. And so this, this new system helps us out when we can, can do that solderless pipe fitting. That concludes everything for facilities. It's time for questions for that.
Let me ask you a question real quick. Do we have a, I know that a lot of, you know, what we're going through with our courthouse and, and trying to get money and, and do that. Do we have, and I'm sure we do, and I'm sure it's been said before, but, you know, we look at our jail. I don't remember really when it was built, but are we, do we have something tracking because of our aging facilities and, and all that good stuff?
As, so let me, let me ask your question. Is if we're just tracking like our old jail with the aging?
You know, sort of like, you know, our courthouse. You know, we have to, by state law, we have to go ahead and, and put money into because of our, you know, state law. Do, but on the other side, as far as the county, I know our detention center is getting older and, and stuff like that. Do we have, like, how we track some of these buildings and keep them up to date so they don't have to be rebuilt or, you know, we need a new one or anything like that?
Right. So with, Mr. Chairman, within the maintenance department, what we do is, I kind of have a rolling list of things that we've done and repairs to the facilities. I think the future plan for us is to try to get a five-year plan in place for all of our facilities. I know when we used our, a lot of our geo bond monies, we took care of a lot of the issues that our buildings had. And so we're actually sitting really good in our buildings for, for what we have and for the age of them right now. So, yes, we, we do need to come up with a five-year plan for those.
And, and you do a wonderful job, but eventually, you know, it's sort of like the courthouse. Eventually, we're going to have to figure out other ways and, and what to do. You know, look at our hospital, the aging. I mean, and that was built a long time ago. But, you know, that, that's my biggest thing. You do do a good job. It's just, do we know, or at least future commissioners know that, hey, by 2025 or 20, I mean, 2030, 35, this is what we're going to need? So, no, thank you. You're on the right track.
Very good.
Commissioner Medina?
Hey, Jason. Good afternoon. Good morning. Got a phone call from somebody out in the Mimbres Valley advising of a fuel cell put up by the member CMS station. I took a ride out there. What's, send off.
Yeah, so that, that fuel cell that's there is, we decided to put it on a place of county-owned property because it previously was not out there. And so that's where we fill up our road graders. It's kind of central little place located out there. And so, yeah, it's for the road department and our road graders.
The, the individual that commented was concerned that she thought it was tied to a water trough for animals. And I took a ride out there, and I saw it's like a, to make sure nothing spills onto the ground is what it looks like. But she thought it was more like a water source for animals. I explained to her after I drove out there that it wasn't, but I just wanted to make sure that it was something we were doing.
Yeah, that's correct. So the EPA requires us to put a containment system under there. That's kind of the easiest way to throw one of those.
That's why I said, I just want to verify with you. Over here tomorrow, I can say Jason said.
Exactly.
Appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Then under fleet maintenance, on January 20, oil changes and inspections completed by our in-staff, 14 diagnoses and repairs, two blades had the cutting edges replaced, four units had tires repaired or replaced, and four windshield replaced. We're continuing to prepare for auctioning off obsolete retired vehicles. And I'd like to make an announcement that Toby Rascón has been promoted to fleet manager for Grant County. He's had his 30 years of service here, and he's going to, he's going to do a great job for us. His number's listed here. I'm going to be sending it out in the safety committee meetings and minutes and things like that. But also, going forward, if you have any fleet-related issues, he's going to be getting, he's going to be in the driver's seat for all of that stuff. Stand for any questions for fleet maintenance?
Good. Well, sorry, Commissioner Flores?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jason, quick question. When you say you're getting units or vehicles ready for the auction, obviously, some of these are from the sheriff's department units, correct?
Yeah, well, not as of yet. So we, we finished last year. We got all of those old units put there obsolete, and we have them auctioned out there.
My only question is, when you do issue, get those units ready for auction, who, who strips out the equipment so that they can be used for the new units coming in? Do you guys contract that out, or do you guys do it yourself?
So it's kind, sometimes it's a, it's a collaboration between the sheriff's office and our, our fleet staff that, that do those things. So we used to have a container down there. We would put a lot of the older stuff in there so we could repurpose that. But a lot, a lot of times now, the models change, and so that stuff just becomes outdated. So we have to, we have to look at it and, and see, you know, if like the, the older explorers, they changed in 2014 to like the newer, the newer 2024s and 25s now that are coming out. They even changed again in 2020. So those models change. But yes, we do try to repurpose when we can. That's what your question is.
Yes, thank you.
Anything else?
No. Road department. Moving on to the road department. So routine blading on all county roads continues. Clearing of trees and road grades and debris on guardrails. Bridge approaches and culvert maintenance. We've installed 40 feet of 48-inch culvert on Rushing Mountain Road that was collapsed and beyond repair. We clean culverts, install extensions, reset the proper grade and for water flow on Ridge Road. I'll show you some pictures here at the end of this. We're still doing our routine patching of cold and hot mix to fix potholes in other districts. The culvert and material has been installed for the Joseph Plain project. We'll haul, we're going to, for future projects, we're going to haul some material and improve water drainage on Hereford Drive. Working with bridge contractors to bring all our bridges up to necessary specifications. We plan to haul 500 tons of material to Royal John Road for some road improvements. And let's see some pictures here. Sirete Mine Road, this was a, a bridge that we had some inspections done, and a lot of, so our staff's been out there working really hard to clear up trees so that the channels can flow properly underneath the bridges and make sure we don't have any washouts on the abutments and things like that. See that old culvert at Rushing Mountain Road that was failing? So we got a new one installed. The guys went out there for two days, got it installed. Very, very happy with their work. Our road department's a great crew out there. That's the finished project that you can see there. Those are some culvert repairs we did on Ridge Road for a constituent that came out and had some issues. So we got that all tied up and fixed for them. Just a picture of our routine patching, some things we do. That's it. I stand for any questions for the road department.
Jason, Hereford Drive, where's that? I've never heard of that.
It's off of Cottage Sand Road. There's a little subdivision to the left. Soon as you go past the second stop sign, goes up on top of here.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Flores?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One, one request, Jason. I was contacted by, by a citizen that lives on the Truck-Bike Pass Road. And having lived there at one time myself, I understand that road's been redone, but at some point in time, the, the weeds are going to start getting high. And I know there's a difficulty when people come out their driveway accessing the road. Could you just maybe keep an eye on those weeds and, and get them mowed every once in a while when they do start growing?
Yes, we will. We will definitely look at that.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to say thank you to the county manager and Jason and your road department. I was just blown away how promptly you took care of that culvert problem, issue on Ridge Road. It really makes our county look, look good that we respond so quickly. So thank you. I was just amazed at your work.
You're welcome, Commissioner. We have a great crew down there. Anything else? Y'all have a great day.
You too. Thank you, Jason. County manager, it's all yours. County manager, it's all yours.
Good, commissioners. We'll review the agenda for Thursday. We will have a presentation from Jessa- Jessica Massengill, she's the county extension agent, she uh presents an annual report um every year to you and this will be her review of the twenty twenty-four um extension program. You have your regular monthly report from Hila Regional Medical Center CEO Robert Whitaker. For the consent agenda um this month, you have uh the minutes from the work session and regular meeting and the expenditure report. Any questions or concerns on either of those?
I haven't even looked at the expenditure report. Is it still on there?
Yes.
I haven't looked, yeah, go ahead, I'll, I'll look at it this evening.
Moving on to new business, item C, consideration of approval to expend fire protection uh grant funds in the amount of two hundred seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars and ten cents to purchase handhelds and mobile radios for the Whiskey Creek Volunteer Fire Department. Uh this is the same grant funding that you approved for um last month for purchase of trucks. Whiskey Creek applied for uh communication equipment, so this will replace all of their handhelds and mobile radios and all of their apparatus. And this is a hundred percent grant funded. Item D, consideration of approval of the purchase of a twenty twenty-five Peterbilt four thousand gallon water truck. The amount has actually changed, do you have that with you, Jason? It's less, not more. Uh this is a CES contract with Four Rivers Equipment. To give you a little background on our situation at the road department with the lack of a water truck, um probably close to ten years ago, we purchased a used water truck that has um been repaired over and over and over again, it's no longer roadworthy. Um to finish out last year's chipping season, we rented a water truck, which proved to be quite costly. Um so we would like to use L A T C F funding to replace the water truck and it's a hundred and eighty-nine thousand instead of two hundred and seven.
Mind me to talk to you later about what truck?
Any questions or concerns? You need more information? Item E, uh consideration of a letter of request to join the county livestock loss authority. The J P A states that in order for um new board members, that we have to request to join the livestock loss authority, so we would just prepare a letter if you choose to, to join. Moving on to, oh, is there any further discussion on that?
This is kind of a new topic for me, but I, I'm a little bit familiar with like uh wolf advocates, you know, the wolf reintroduction and it seems to me like this agreement, joining this group would actually be good um for everyone because if you're a producer and you lose a calf and it was due to a wolf, you would probably feel less animosity towards the wolves if you're getting some compensation. Um I guess I just wanted to say that out loud and see if anyone had any other thoughts or different perspectives on that.
No, I totally agree with you, I mean, we're always talking and people are always coming up here every time they have a program or want to get, so they talk about academic development. And I think that helps with that because it is a business that they have and they run. So yeah, you're spot on, thank you.
And that, that was some of the intent when this started, I was still working in Sierra County when um this thought came up and it was actually well received from both. Um there is no denial that, you know, it's because of them that they're losing this livestock, so you're exactly right. That was the intent. So moving on, oh, go ahead.
Was there, I just wanna be sure I'm understanding what we'll be looking at on that. Is there a draft letter or we're just is there, would it just be a resolution to write a letter?
So I have not, sorry, I have not had time to draft a letter, but it would be, you would direct me to write a letter to join. Um it would be a very simple letter like pursuant to article section whatever of the joint powers agreement, Grant County is requesting um to become a participant of the joint powers agreement. It would be a simple letter, but I can have that drafted, I'll have it out today. But typically what this commission has done in the past um is so the J P A doesn't say it has to be a resolution, um I spoke with the county manager in Sierra County, she said it didn't have to be a resolution. Um the attorney said it didn't have to be a resolution, you just have to formally request to join. Um and historically, this commission, um sometimes in instances like this, they direct me to write the letter, but I'll go ahead and draft one today and send it out, so you can look at it.
Thank you.
Uh Mr. Chair, and I, I, I um I just feel it's such, such a simple letter, I, I mean, I, I don't need to see a draft of a letter wanting to join the, the the corporation, but it's just a letter, right? I mean, wanna join pursuant to this? I, I don't need to see a rough draft of that. I don't wanna, I don't want you working twice. Just, in my opinion, just draft a letter and we approve it or disapprove it Thursday.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Flores, I, I was just trying to make sure I understood what action we need to take. And so that, that's my only question, I don't.
I think during whoever makes the motion, uh probably just say that, you know, vote on it and, and during your motion just draft a letter to uh join this for, and leave it at that. I mean, I don't know, Mr. Chair.
In the, in the motion, will we include appointing of a member at that time?
I think we have to wait till they say we're in and then we appoint.
Alright.
Am I right?
Okay.
Moving on to agreements, item F is consideration of agreement A twenty-five zero-one. Um this is uh capital appropriation project for the baseball park and facility infrastructure in the amount of one million and nineteen thousand dollars. We briefly talked about this last month, this is just to execute the grant agreement. Item G, consider-
Can you uh, on that one, can you, I don't know, Joseph, who's working, Jason, can you just keep me uh or not just me, but our commissioners to what direction we're headed, what we're doing, what our steps are, what projects we're working on, because to me that's sort of like bottom part and I was kept very well informed of what was going on, so you guys can do that for this, please.
Yes, we'll make sure that um as we plan that, it's included in Joseph's report and as we start doing the work, it'll be in probably Joseph, Joseph and Jason's report. But yes, we will um keep you updated on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner-
Thank you for that, man. Um a few months ago, we had gophers coming out of holes and now they got a chunk of money to help build up, build them and that's, they deserved it. Thank you so much for the, for your hard work, Joseph. Jason, I know you're gonna be involved and stuff, so thank you so much.
We did do some work on the gophers this last week.
Good deal.
Jason can be our director of gophers too.
Moving on to item G, consideration approval of agreement A twenty-five zero-two, which is a mutual aid for fire and rescue emergency services uh between Grant County and Sierra County. Sierra County uh contacted Scott quite some time ago and has submitted this uh mutual aid agreement for our consideration. The Sierra County attorney made some revisions to that and then has reviewed those revisions and also provided approval. If you have any questions, concerns, possible revisions? Okay, next item-
Do you?
No.
Next item H. Consideration and approval of grant amendment number one. This is the grant funding for um E nine-one-one. And what this does is amending their um grant, grant agreement to uh provide additional dollars for uh next gen nine-one-one equipment, so the state is moving all nine-one-one centers to next gen. And this is providing uh funding to purchase the um required equipment to do that. Item I. I'm gonna talk about item I, J, K and L all at one time. So uh due to a timing issue, we signed the New Mexico Department of Health intergovernmental grant agreements. Um the first one, item I is in the amount of a hundred ninety-two thousand five hundred dollars, um the second one is in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand. The county just acts as the fiscal agent for these funds and um so the funding comes from the Department of Health to the county. And then we enter into sub award agreements, which is agreement A twenty-five zero-five and agreement A twenty-five zero-six to allocate those funds to uh C H I. So money comes from D O H to the county, the sub award agreement then moves the money to um C H I. We've done this for a number of years, fiscal agent, um capacity only.
Sure. Commissioner Medina.
County manager, I know when we were up in Santa Fe a few weeks ago, discussions about federal funding being halted and everything else. It seemed that these organizations are doing something good for the community, in the event that federal funding is impacted. What happens at that point? Do we have a backup, do we have a contingency? Cause I hate to lose those services for the people that use them.
That's a conversation that I've been having informally off and on with Dr. Cox, just to get a sense. I believe C H I would be severely impacted, they rely heavily and their employees aren't paid with federal funds to be able to provide these programs. I don't know exactly if this money would pay for the staff person to implement these programs, I, I don't know that, I can ask her between now and Thursday.
I just think that the services they provide are valuable. And I think that, that, you know, she was very clear about it when she made the comments up in Santa Fe and I just wanna make sure it's not something we lose or something we could have a contingency for. Please consider, let us know, thank you.
In the past, and I forget, I don't even remember yesterday sometimes, but when we've, when it was under our umbrella, how did we provide these staff? Cause I know we had a staff person here in the county building for uh health council. How was that, was that still Peter Grant?
Um I, I wasn't here when you had a staff person, I don't know how you funded that. Um so the only monies that the county receives or whoever you've designated as your health council receives is a very small amount from the Department of Health, which is different than the, these funds. And so um larger counties have a complete department, um smaller counties such as, such as ours do the best they can to meet the requirements of the um act, but um I'm not sure how you funded that.
Thank you.
I can find out, but I don't-
Good, it's, it's just, we'll see what the road-
Put through a full source?
Yeah.
So moving on to resolutions. Item M, consideration approval of amendment one to R twenty-four thirty to Patton Road and Tyron Bridge Access Road. I'll talk about M and N at the same time, they're doing the same thing, so item N is uh an amendment one to resolution R twenty-four thirty-two. This is just cleaning up um language that uh was incorrect, where it should have said north, it says south then. Um some incorrect terminology, so before we get into submitting requests for reimbursement, we wanted to make sure that we clean that language up ahead of time. So that's what this is doing. Item O, consideration and approval of resolution R twenty-five twelve, which is a budget adjustment request. And as you can see, it's a lengthy one and I'll let Andrea go over the details.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. On the bar adjustment form, you'll see that majority of the revenue increases are new grants that we have received. Um so, some of it is to um bring in that revenue and then increase as well the expense side that we have to also take into consideration. You'll see transfers in and out, those are our matched portions of the grants that have to be transferred as part of the grant agreements. You'll see um we had to do some transfers into um to cover like the renovations here at the county for um solid waste, we have a renovation and then around the building, the bathrooms and things like that. That's pretty much of it, most of it, we had our new award for Corte Caminos there on a federal grant year, so we brought that revenue in to correct everything for her new fiscal year. Um majority of all this is new funding and I'll stand for any questions.
I would, I would add, um I did have one question in regards to um the Fort Barrett and the Clippula Fire Department, so you will see more of these at the next meeting. What we're doing is allocating the remainder of their budgetary authority for their state fire protection funds. So whenever we develop the budgets, um we didn't have the exact figures, we did bring in the revenue, but we never adjusted their expense side. So I'm meeting uh individually with each of the fire chiefs to determine why they want the rest of that budgetary authority and so that's what, what these are. And so you'll see more of those um on the next bar.
Okay, uh Mr. Chairman. Charlene, and Andrea, so on the ones that don't show revenue, but they show an increase, it's not like we didn't do, we didn't budget appropriately and these were just expenses we had to manage, you're saying we already had revenue? But um we're just now linking up the expenditures that went with that funding.
That's correct, so and, and actually it's, it's twofold, so it's their state, so they have two um two opportunities to allocate funds, their state fire allotment, which comes annually. And that's based upon the number of main stations, substations they have, um they receive that every year. And then they also have the opportunity to allocate any carryover funding that they have from the state fire fund allotments and so that's what all of this is doing. State Fire uh Marshal's Office authorizes them to utilize their carryover money for certain things, like they will make a request that they wanna buy equipment or radios or a new truck. And so they have to use that carryover funding, so this is allocating both of those things.
Thank you.
Which we did not do in the original budget, so the revenue is there, we're just allocating it on the expense side so that they have the authority to spend it.
Thank you.
Item P, consideration and approval of resolution R twenty-five thirteen, submission of application for airport aid to FAA. And this is for the terminal parking lot improvement design.
Pretty straightforward, this is a design grant so that we can fix our affordable parking lot. It's a ninety-five percent FAA, four percent state and one percent local, so that breaks down to ninety-nine thousand seven hundred fifty from the feds, uh four thousand nine hundred eighty-eight from the state and we have a walking two hundred and sixty-three dollars in this. Stand for any questions?
You have a walking what?
Two hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Man, that's a lot.
I know.
Thank you, Commissioner Medina, go ahead.
Quick question, I don't know if you can help, I know it's off the subject, but
Um getting complaints from citizens regarding advanced, is there any way we could get them to come in and answer some questions? Um regarding flights are sold out, send us an email and then flights are opening up. I've gotten about three or four phone calls on it, are you aware of anything like that happening or?
Their standard system is that, you know, the tickets are available and then if people cancel, then they generally have a waiting list, that they'll send an email out to let that, let people know that there is a seat on that flight.
Yeah, I got, I got, I have a phone call from one individual and I just thought, well, you missed a flight.
I got, I have a phone call from one individual, and I just thought, well, you missed a flight. And then I've got two more phone calls, very similar, that there's a, hey, email us if you've got, if you've got questions, and they're emailing, and then all of a sudden, tickets are popping up. So I'm just kind of really curious about it, if you heard anything on it. But it seems like they're coming at a higher rate as well.
So I think it depends on, so yeah, like you try to book a flight, it'll say that it's full, but there's a way that you can get on the waiting list, and then they start with whoever was on the waiting list first, and they send you an email saying that. So, I mean, I think that that, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that could change on a daily basis depending on the number of cancellations that someone made. I mean, you might have four people that cancel their flight one day and one the next or something, but that's just how it has normally worked?
I just got, I just got off the telephone calls. I just want to make sure we're treating our people equally across the board, and it's not something where we're kind of holding things over everybody's head.
But we can get them back.
Yeah, I can ask Barbara.
You make a phone call and ask somebody.
Ask Barbara.
Yeah, I think one of the other things that we see is because they have a very simple cancellation process, that we get people that get their ticket books, and they'll book a bunch of flights. And then because they know that they can cancel without a penalty, they end up canceling. And so it just kind of puts a churn, you know, in their system. So, but I'd be happy to speak with them and have someone come talk to you about it.
I just think that you're doing an amazing job out there at the airport. I just want to make sure that relationship is a positive one.
It is.
Because I want to make sure that the citizens see in their eyes that we're doing anything for them, as well as the amount of work you do out there. Thank you.
I'll talk to Barbara.
Okay. Moving on to item Q, consideration and approval of Resolution R twenty-five fourteen, submission of an application to the Colonius Infrastructure Board for twenty-twenty-five. Joseph?
Thank you, County Manager. Mr. Chair Commissioners, so as Ms. Webb alluded to, so we're just right now looking for support from the commission to go through the application process. And then as we were working with these previous budget items is, we're saying, okay, we're going to go ahead and budget our ten percent of that contributions. If we go through the application process and approve, then we would later on do a bar adjustment and so on and so forth. But of course, this is for Phase Three of the Arenas Valley Road Improvement Project. So of course, that's the widening of the road, addressing the shoulders, and putting up all proper signage to make sure traffic can get through there safely. So I'll stand for any questions.
So just to add on to that, for those of the new commissioners, so Colonius funding works a little bit differently than any other funding source that we have. And this is the first step. They require a resolution to even allow us to submit an application. So they want to know that the governing body approves the middle of an application. So this is just the very first step. So this is you granting us the authority to submit the application and agreeing to the match. And then once that comes through, they open up a time period when applications can be submitted. That's the next step. And then there's a lot more documents, if our application is approved, that we bring back to you. So it's a very, pretty intense program.
Okay. Mr. Commissioner? I have a, I have a question, just to make sure I understand too. In our six hundred and sixty thousand dollar match for, say, the Arenas Valley Colonius project, that's in kind, that we're committing to do the construction? We're not having to come up with that money? We're, well, we are. We're funding, our road department's doing the work. Is that right?
It can be either or. So Colonius allows it to be cash or in kind, and he's proposing in act.
Yeah, and we can, we can do that. Either way, you know, we can make those decisions at the, you know, close to the end there. But, and it, you know, when you look at the percentages and the way that it's written, and the way Colonius puts that, it says ninety percent grant, ten percent loan, ten percent cash or in kind. So if you will, that grant, or that Colonius is actually approving ninety percent of it. Ten percent of that is a loan that we repay, and then the remaining ten percent is our contributions to them. So that, like I say, that can either be cash or in kind. So that's six hundred and sixty thousand. That first portion of it is the loan component, and then the second label of six hundred and sixty thousand is our cash or in kind.
Typically, what we've done since I've been here is we have tried to utilize cash as our match for Colonius. It's much cleaner, it's much easier to track. What we've done with, what the previous commission had granted me the flexibility to do was we are utilizing the LETCF funding that we received to make infrastructure improvements. That's how we've caught up on the building work that Jason mentioned. That's how we are improving our fleet. That's how we're doing a lot of the work that has been neglected over the years and not hit our general fund. But typically, what we do with Colonius is we budget that out of our general fund, or for this previous year, we used that LETCF funding, so it didn't hit the general fund. But it's a lot easier and cleaner for Colonius to budget cash. And that's what we've historically done.
So for these two projects, are they? It seems like we're using pretty specific numbers for our ten percent match. Does that mean that these are designed, they're shovel-ready, we're just applying for a grant to do that?
Yes.
Great, great questioner, a great, great question, Commissioner. So Phase One was the actual design of the work. Phase Two is the twenty-twenty-four that we are moving forward with. And then this is actually Phase Three. So it's a continuation of the work that's already been designed. So the only thing that we really have to address on there is some of the easements and rightaways, which is part of that budget, and then we can proceed with construction.
Thank you.
So what we have tried to do with our Colonius, years ago, it was all over the board. We would be doing design of a road over here and construction of a road over there, and then things were falling behind, and the cost estimates would go way up from the time we had it designed. So what we've tried to do with our Colonius funding is structure, structure it so that we, we would, like Franks and Crum Road, Crum Road is an example, Arenas Valley is an excellent example. We use Colonius for planning and design and all of the engineering. Then it becomes a shovel-ready project, and then we move on, and we ask for Colonius funding for construction of the shovel-ready project. A lot of times, there's not enough funding, so then we have to phase the project, like Arenas Valley is done in phases, because there wasn't enough funding. So we've tried to structure Colonius funding to where it's a streamlined process, to where we're using the same funding for planning, design. That project then scores more points on the application because it is shovel-ready and it's ready to move forward. So it's seamless. We finish up our project before we move on to do something else. So we're trying to finish up Arenas Valley with the twenty-twenty-five cycle. By that time, engineering and our preliminary cost estimates would be done on Franks and Crum Road, so we would come back the next year to ask you for construction for Franks and Crum, and that's how we, that's kind of how we stagger it. And it's proved to be successful.
In addition to Ms. Webb's comments, another rationale reason for that is we only have a twenty-four month period with this funding, so it does expire pretty rapidly. So for us to do the design, complete the construction, everything, we would not be able to meet that twenty-four month period. And so any work that remains after that twenty-four month period would be all on the county. So that's also a reason for that staggered approach, if you will. We're kind of leapfrogging it. We do the design, we go back, and then we request for funding for construction. So if we can keep these in a staggered approach, that seems to work best. And so that way, we have that ability to spend that money, and we don't have to spend any more out of pocket than necessary.
Great. Thanks. This is a great education for me and very important to our, our community. It's the foundation of our economy and our, in our culture and lifestyle things.
Thank you, Commissioner.
No, I was going to ask.
Those are very good questions. If it wasn't for a Colonius fund, I don't think we'd get any of these projects done and on with the roads. I mean, if you look at ten percent of millions, and, I mean, could you imagine us trying to pay all those millions of dollars to get all this work? There's no way we could do it. So, yeah, I appreciate those questions. Thank you.
Next item, R, consideration and approval of Resolution R twenty-five fifteen, supporting Tyrone Peak Exploration and Emma Exploration by Freeport McMoran. Mr. Chairman?
Reason, you know, and thank you, County Manager, for, for help and all that. This is very important to me as far as, you know, our minds and, and not only that, just the economic impact that it has to our community and what Freeport has always done for our communities. Not only the money that they give certain, you know, groups and stuff, but, you know, exploring to expand our mine, it's also protecting what's life of mine, you know, giving it more years. It's also protecting the jobs and the economies that come with it. These are just explorations. You know, they need minerals, they need copper to continue to doing all that. If you really look at it, one hundred and seventy-five million was an economic benefit to, to our community. And also for Grant County was four hundred and fourteen million dollars. So I think this is very important. And I know, and the one that really, that sort of irks me is, is we have certain groups that, you know, continually come at, at Freeport or the mine, not taking into consideration the jobs that they provide, not only at Tyrone, but at Chino, that could be devastating to our economy if we don't have those jobs. I mean, it's going to affect our hospitals, it's going to affect our schools, it's going to affect our universities. It's just going to affect us all the way around. You know, one of the common things that, that really, I guess, is like a thorn in my side, when they come at, at, you know, the contamination of water. You know, and the part of the reason that, that I had this put on here is to support our mines, support our employees, really. I'm not sitting here saying that I support Freeport. You know, Freeport's a company. They're a billion-dollar company. I'm here to say we need to support our workers, we need to support our miners. But if you really look at what Freeport has done, and I wish that some energy would be translated to our water projects. We have about now probably close to a hundred million dollars that came three, four years ago with SB two hundred. That was part of stopping the diversion, which is fine, I'm good with that, stopping the diversion and getting the monies put in Santa Fe. You know, we have a company, we have that many millions of dollars sitting in Santa Fe somewhere. Our water projects haven't been going at Dade Reed. I don't know where that one hundred, one point three million dollars came in from. I don't know if it came from that pot of money, but there's enough money for the southwest corner of New Mexico to be used for these water projects. But at the end of the day, we continually hear they're going to poison the water, they're poisoning the water. Well, you know, you ask the residents in Hurley, is that water poisoned? Because that's the only water they have, is the water that's been given to them by Freeport. You know, you turn around, how did our regional water planning go? Well, Freeport turned around, gave them water rights. You know, they'll continually say, well, you know, we don't want jobs gone. We, well, you know, I don't, I think in the totality, I think that our energy should be more towards, you know, getting to the Interstate Stream Commission to get more money for these projects. You know, sending letters to the state, where's this money? We need the money for, for our water. So this is important to me because of the employees and the jobs that they, that they have. And yeah, definitely, we, in my opinion, we need to continue to support our local mining operations. We need to support them, and we can, through state law, support them and continue doing what they're doing. And this is a reason I think we need to send this letter off and make, and hopefully that they listen to us and they go ahead and issue these permits. You know, I think when I was there, in my opinion, is environmental stewardship. They've done a very, very good job in doing that. When I worked there, I know that there was a lot of things put in place. I believe Chino, I'm not sure how many Tyrone has, and Commissioner, you could probably let me know. I think they had like a hundred and sixty wells around that property that they test religiously, you know, to make sure that the groundwater is not being contaminated. But anyway, I'm going to get off all that. But I think that we need, not only for the economic value that it has to this company, you know, our employees, they get paid, they have medical insurance, or the employees of Freeport, I should say, they get medical insurance, you know, they come in, they spend money in Grant County, they send their kids to school. You know, I'm not a financial person, but I can tell you when layoffs occur, when things, I measure it by the way Walmart is. If you look at Walmart, you can see the, the financial hit we're taking. The parking lot's not full. So I think that me personally, I'm not telling you guys how to feel, how to vote, that's strictly up to you. This is why I support this. It's the people that work there and the jobs that are there that we need to continue to support. So that's why I went ahead and I had a conversation with the county manager and asked her, I know probably took you all by surprise when you got put in there at the last minute. I know that there was some public hearing that was requested, that it be done, but at the end of the day, I didn't go to those. I think that my time would be better used in presenting this to our commission for a vote. Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you for sharing your perspective. I thought about this a lot when I read the resolution. One thing that's kind of always bothered me is that if you ask questions about the mine, you're, it's implied that you don't support the mine, that you want the mine to go away, that you want the jobs to go away. And I just, I think that's absurd. You know, I, I really value the economic impact of Freeport in this community and the jobs that are provided. And I also understand that there are environmental workers with Freeport that are doing a good job and have, you know, have earned some trust. I also think that just like with government or mining, questions are good, they're healthy. We should be able to ask questions and have a little bit of pushback and conversation. And I've, I've gotten some feedback from constituents and groups that they're not against the exploratory mining that's being proposed at Tyrone and the Emma site. But I think that there's a request for a little bit more clarification. I've, I understand that they want a better map so that people can see, like, where this proposed area is and, like, look at the residential areas around it. And then also, there's a request for more detail about hours of operation, whether or not there will be any kind of, like, light or dust mitigation. And my understanding, Chairman, is that our resolution would encourage the New Mexico Mining and Mineral Division to expedite approval of these permits. And I would like to vote for the resolution, but I also want, I would like Freeport to offer some assurance, you know, to the public about, about, you know, with the map, with a little bit more detail about what will be done for the, the noise and dust and light. And then environmentally, I know there was a hearing last night, I didn't go, so it may be that all these questions were, were dealt with. I think it is important to protect ground and surface water quality and wildlife. And there are recommendations from the New Mexico Department of Fish and the Forestry Division about using a closed-loop drilling system, and that eliminates the need to build fences or install netting to exclude wildlife from mud pits. It also reduces surface disturbance and consumes less water. And that if that method is not used, then mud pitch should be adequately fenced to prevent, prevent larger animals from walking into the tarps and getting entrapped. And then finally, a recommendation was to leave the large juniper and pinon trees, salvage rare plants, and avoid ground disturbance and vegetation removal during the primary breeding season for migratory birds. So again, I don't bring this up to be oppositional, but just, is there some way that the public can have some assurance about these things? Which they seem pretty reasonable in my mind, just to have a better map and a little bit more understanding about what's being proposed. And I know the application for the permits has already been submitted, so I'm not sure what, how that, what that assurance would look like, but that's what I wanted to bring up.
No, thank you, and I appreciate it. And, and those are legitimate questions, but I think, and I think Commissioner Shalit will know more about this than what I did, but they do have staff designated for, for birds, for wildlife out there, that, that help with that and make sure that they don't get into the mine or get into the mud pits. You know, and, and it's sort of, to me, it's sort of an idea of, you know, when I purchased my home in Arenas Valley, there's a dirt road, it's not paved. I knew there was going to be dust with vehicles, I can't stop it. You know, those are the things that need to be taken into consideration before you move next to, to any mine or, or you live on a dirt road. You know, when I was in law enforcement, a lot of the complaints we get, well, there's no parking downtown. Well, when you rent a business to open up, when you were in a building to open up a business, those are things that you have to take into consideration. So I know I'm getting, you know, but some of this stuff has already did. I question the mine all the time, but I question them in a different way. You have to build rapport with some of the people, and you have to sit down and have conversations with some of these people. You know, what baffles me is last time there was a public hearing, we went through the public hearing, and they don't say it out loud. They went through a public hearing, then they filed a protest. You know, sort of where the public doesn't really know that protest is coming. You know, if you want transparency, you be transparent also. You know, the lights, the dust, it's a mine, those are the things that built Grant County. You know, our mine, our community here in Grant County, and I grew up here, 57 years, I've been here, this community has been built. My grandfather's worked at, my father worked at the mine, I worked at the mine, my son worked at the mine. This is what has built Grant County. If you look at the projects that are being done, if you look at the money that they're giving to the community so they can continue their projects, all we're asking is that our people continue to work, continue to have the benefits, and continue to contribute to the economy. The environmental piece hasn't been, yes, Tyrone, you know, I think they lost one of the tanning dams quite a while back, but they take a lot of precautions, they have teams, they look at all this, even water when it rains, you know, that they capture it so it doesn't run into other properties. So I, to me, it's, I think, I think a building rapport with people and having conversations with, with the general managers, having conversation with some of the managers that are there. And, but at the end of the day, we need this and we need to keep our people working. Well, I'm sorry, I took, I, yeah, go ahead. I just get going sometimes.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Stevens, I, I did attend the meetings last night. I know Commissioner Shalit, Commissioner Medina were there as well. And Shorty was there too. They, it was very informative. They addressed all the question, they addressed all the questions that you brought up. They have scientists, geologists. I was very impressed because they are a very good steward of our environment, and they look at everything that I never even thought of. So I think they do go above and beyond. They explained the lighting, they explained the dust, and they used a term I've never heard of, it's called fugitive dust. And I mentioned in my comments last night that, on the same link, Commissioner Ponce said, these folks are living in the Borough Mountain Homestead, there's no paved roads out there, there's dust. Fugitive dust? I, I have yet to know what that is. Dust, I think, is dust, but yeah, they've, they've gone above and beyond, and I didn't support the permits. I agree with the, everybody's comments here, mining is detrimental to our economy, and hopefully they expedite the permits, as you said. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'll just say one thing, a couple of things, that I appreciate the questions that were raised by the community there, including, including HeLa Resource Information Project. I think the mining representatives, the representatives that, of Freeport appreciated those questions also. At the end of the day, exploration is one, it's the very first step of getting a permit to actually do mining. It's a really important step. I'm personally excited that Freeport is investing that kind of funding in here because it, just to do that work is extraordinarily expensive compared to what even the county normally deals with and in our budget. And it's a lot less disturbance than actual mining. But there are very specific rules that they have to meet, and where it comes to protecting groundwater and, and surface water, that's the main focus of, of environmental protection in, in doing the exploration. And I thought, and, and nobody's ever going to be completely satisfied if they're that interested and that focused on, but they can't get a permit unless they meet those minimum requirements that are in the law. And from what I heard last evening, they're not only meeting those, like for example, you mentioned the lighting and view shed, that it's, it's not really required in the, in the rules that they address that. However, I did hear the company say, these are exactly what we're going to do, these are the things we're going to do to address that. So because they, if, if there's somebody nearby, that, that could be a nuisance to them. And so I care about that too. And so I'm glad the questions were asked. And it sounds like the company, even though it may not be a requirement of that particular regulation, that they said, yes, we are addressing that, and here's how we're doing it. So I thought it was a good conversation. There was nothing wrong at all with asking the questions and getting those answers.
Sort of, my comments are, you know, Freeport did a good job last night in their presentation. I think they went above and beyond. They made it very clear to the community and the public that, what their intentions were, how they're going to handle it, the laws that were outlined by the New Mexico Mineral Department, how they're going to take care of those issues regarding the lighting, that, that, the conversation you almost had almost sounded identical to the conversation you made last night. Almost seems like you're reading off of her, her document, but it, it seems that they have a lot of safeguards in place to make sure that it's done correctly. And last night, one comment was made about some animals, and Mr. Bays brought up, and it's funny, when the, when the comment was made about the animals, it almost seemed that the whole car put their head down and grabbed their phone and start researching. Mr. Bays, off the top of his head, was just fast and witty about what he's, I was, I was really impressed with the man last night. But the mine is going above and beyond, and, and Chairman Ponce is correct. The livelihood of that mine is the bloodline for this county. Without those jobs, without that, without that economical impact that it has, we don't survive here. We don't have a hospital, we don't have western, we don't have school districts. You know, when, when the New Mexico Environmental or the Mining Department was talking, they, they listed out a lot, a list of group of departments, game and fish, I can't remember who they were last night, but there's about 10 of them. But nobody listed the impacts that has the employees if they lose those jobs. Freeport's doing it the right way. I mean, somebody even made the comment, it's their property, why are they doing this? It's their private property, nobody would know they were in there doing it, you know, but they're being, I mean, open about it, they're, they want to follow the rules, they're, they're doing the permits, they're doing everything they can. Even went about and took pictures of an oil rig with lighting and, and mud pits and everything, and when you sit there and wonder, man, they put that much effort into it before we're starting the project, I mean, they're going to, they're going to follow through with the, with the, with their efforts. But I do want to commend them, you know, they, I think they were very informational last night, and, and I think it's a good thing for the community. That's all I have.
Anybody else, Commissioners?
I just appreciate you thinking of, of doing it, because I agree with you, it's, it's absolutely critical to Tyrone's future that this exploration be done. And I appreciate it when a entity like, like this shows the company that, and those employees that we care about that and we want you to invest those dollars here. Even the exploration itself will benefit our economy. It's a lot of investment. I don't, I can guarantee, I'm pretty sure it's safe to say they'll be spending more than $10 million if they get this permit to be able to do the exploration out there just to, just to investigate and see if there's potential for additional mining at those locations, so.
Anybody else, Commissioners? Thank you.
We now have an executive session to discuss Item S, which is real property, and also Item T, pending and threatening, pending and threatened litigation in regards to 25 Rodeo Road. And that is your agenda for Thursday.
Thank you. Moving on to Commissioner Reports, Commissioner Medina, do you have a report?
Yeah, just want to remind the public that tomorrow, we're having our quarterly meeting and the members at the senior center, starting at 11:45. I'm inviting anybody who wants to come out, has questions or comments about anything, please, please attend. That's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Fortes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only comment I have or question is I'd like to start working on getting that community forum together for the public to attend and talk about the good and the bad with HeLa Regional Medical Center and their experience. I'd like to schedule it possibly for May 5th, was it, March 5th, I'm sorry, March 5th was the Wednesday? That way it gives us about three weeks of advertisements. And hopefully, we can get it on social media, the local paper. And can we have it here? Is this a location?
Could have it at the conference center?
Okay, at the conference center, and I welcome everybody in the, in the county and the community to come and talk to us. And I'll forward this information or get it to the Board of Trustees as well, because I know they wanted to, to be informed. Yes, at 6 o'clock. I think that's a good time because everyone gets off at 5:00, and hopefully we get done not too late. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Shalit.
I just want, have one thing to do, and I plan to say it again, I think in the regular meeting on my report, is that I attended the legislative, the Association of Counties Legislative Conference, and I just wanted to highlight that Grant County received an award there, or maybe multiple awards, but it stuck out in my mind that one of the difficulties of being a county entity is there's a lot of risk that we deal with. And we got an award, I believe, for, out of all the counties in New Mexico for reducing our risk profile the most. Did I get that roughly correctly?
You did, and I, I will bring that on Thursday. I reserve us in doing that today. So we did receive an award for our risk awareness program for reducing our losses. So I'll bring that on Thursday.
Okay. Yep, I just thought that was fantastic. There were a lot, and, and one thing I saw there is the Association of Counties does a great job. There were educational opportunities, it was very informative for me. And I noticed that several of our county employees also got recognized for achieving their certifications, I think, under, that, that they can achieve through the Association of Counties training that's involved, or, or that's offered to New Mexico State University. I thought that was fantastic, to see our county employees recognized that way and getting to receive a diploma, so to speak, for putting in that effort. And so anyway, I just, I just think that there's all kinds of opportunities there that I hope to see our county continue to receive, even some of the other awards that were offered there. It was great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens.
I was just kind of assessing that about five weeks into my county commission term, I've, you know, heard from several constituents on a number of topics, including fire risk reduction and road improvements and junkyards and nuisance animals. And I really appreciate our county manager's willingness to work with me and educate me about how to be responsive to people's concerns, and, and I will keep trying to do that. Another topic that I have kind of floating around as something I want to think more about is revisit the trails and open space work that was done with the town of Silver City a while back and just revisit. I know there, there is a plan to connect green spaces, and so I'm just, I'm interested in, in revitalizing that. So just food for thought. I think that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody have anything else that you remember? No? I have nothing. Meeting adjourned.